Call to order this meeting of the regular Lake Havasu City Plan and Zoning Commission for February 7, 2024. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Hennigan.
Commissioner Matthew Mitchell.
Commissioner Susannah Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Joan DeZerro.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Laird.
Here.
Commissioner Tiffany Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Lonnie Stevenson.
Here.
Commissioner J.B. Thornton.
Here.
Commissioner Jim Harris. Vice Chair Gabrielle Medley.
Here.
Chair David Diaz.
Here.
All right, seeing we need one of the alternates, Mr. Stevenson, would you please come and take your place on the dais and sign in, please? And while he's signing in, Mr. Gilbert, any correspondence and announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have a couple of things to note. First of all, Monday of last week, I believe it was Monday last week, the feasibility study, first meeting, was held by the team that's working on the secondary access to the island, and there was approximately 108 people in attendance from the sign-in rolls, and the consultant team, it was probably an hour and a half long, the consultant team answered a lot of questions after the presentation, and the money for the bridge is in the account controlled by the city, so the project is moving forward and is going to be built at some point. But again, one of the stresses was just the first public outreach meeting, and there will be others coming in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, we all received the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? If not...
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Wilson.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 17 meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes by Commissioner Wilson. There's a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ballard. Any more discussion? Okay, ready to vote? All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this process. City staff will present each item. There will be the time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and the applicant will have an opportunity to present their case to the commission. Once that is done, we will open a public hearing to give community members an opportunity to ask questions or provide input. I ask that anyone who wishes to speak limit their trips to the microphone to once per item and keep comments to less than five minutes. Please stay on point and refrain from discussing subject matter not pertinent to the item being considered. There will be an opportunity for the public to address the commission about other topics later in the meeting. After public testimony is taken, I will close the public hearing and bring the item back to the table for the city staff's recommendation, further discussion amongst the commissioners, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. And we thank you for adhering to this protocol. All right, the first item on the agenda is ID 24-4117, a request for preliminary subdivision plat approval for Grand Island residential estates, creating 51 residential lots, an additional open space parcel A on approximately 17.93 acres in the residential estates planned development R-E/PD district. Mr. Gilbert, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's important to start my presentation by pointing out this is the preliminary plating phase where the initial feasibility of the plat is being looked at. The detailed engineering will all occur between the preliminary and the final plat phases. So this particular parcel, 1994 Grand Island Estates Development Plan, this was parcel A and parts of parcel B and C shown on it. The other parcels, D, E, F, and H, and I, and part G have all been developed so far. So this is pretty much the only remaining part that has not been built. Monticello Estates, as you see on the overhead, is to the east. The general location of it is off Beach Comber, where it curves on the northwest side down towards Site 6. So the zoning on the property entitlement was established in January of 2023 by the city council when they rezoned it to RE PD, which is why before you with the plat today. The existing proposed land use is vacant land to present and the proposed single-family homes in open space. The total number of proposed lots is 51 plus parcel A open space. If you look at the zoning here, that shows you the RE PD area and M U N PD, which a little bit of that also impacts the undeveloped part of the plat. But let me advance this one more slide. This is the general development plan from 1994, and it outlines the area that was that's included for this plat. And then finally, the plat itself includes 51 lots. Important to point that the original development plan had a maximum anticipated development of 402 lots for all of Grand Island Estates through all the subdivisions, and with these 51, upon approval, with these 51 lots, the total number would be 393, still less than the 402 that were originally approved back in 1994. So included in your packets are a number of attachments, including the traffic study and the drainage study, that were required by Public Works prior to even the preliminary plat review. There are a number of items that the developer still has to work out on the engineering, and that's why having approval of preliminary plat is so important, so they can make the investments necessary to address all those issues. But, and you see that in the staff report on the comments from reviewers. And there were a number of items, and I'll get to that with the recommendation after we hear from the public and any questions you may have at this point, but there were a number of items that are in the staff recommendations as conditions of approval. And some of those, some of those are, of course, from the January 2023 general development plan approval that accompanied the rezoning of the property. And I'll go over all those in recommendations. That's all I have at the moment here. Does anyone have any questions? It's very basic plat layout.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
I have a question.
Commissioner Ballard?
Just curious, it says the proposed number of lots is 51 plus parcel A open space, and then it says the development shall be limited to no more than 55 lots. Does that mean there's an additional four lots someplace that...
The original approval with the zoning was limiting at 55 lots, but they were not able to make 55 lots actually feasible because of the layout of the parcel. They were only able to manage 51 plus essentially a wasted parcel in the northeast corner.
So should that line then not read the developer should be limited to no more than 51 lots? On page two, line one.
That particular item comes from, let's see here, the city council's approval of the zoning in January 2023, that was one of the conditions of approval, that the development shall be limited to no more than 55 lots. But it's an upper limit, they didn't set a lower limit. So the development came in at 51, which is lower than what the council originally anticipated them doing. That's not a problem because they only set an upper limit.
And is there a future plan for parcel A?
There is not at the present. That particular parcel, there's a lot of easements and utilities that run through there, so there's not a lot of development that can reasonably be done. It could, the HOA could, that would be part of this development, could turn into a park, a pocket park, and maintain it. But it's going to have to be maintained somehow, but whether it's a park or not will be up to future owners of the property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Any new commissioners? Commissioner DeZerro?
Just on the traffic study, I was looking, and I think it might be a typo or something. It's not making sense. On page two, under proposed site conditions, it says the expected project opening year is 2032, eight years down the road. Is that what's meant for this?
That's a question that probably should be aimed at the developer. Sometimes there's errors in those documents when they do cut and paste activities, and that may not even be pertinent to this particular project, but that is a little...
Just a question, because it just didn't make sense with the rest of the report, so...
It's unusual for a plat that usually builds out a lot faster than eight years to make a statement like that.
Even in these days, I think that's a long time.
Any other questions? Any other commissioners? All right, is applicant present? Please state your full name and spell your last name for the record.
Good morning, commission members and staff. My name's Stuart Schmelin, S-C-H-M-E-L-I-N-G. I'm here representing the owner, Jim Roll. And I also have with me Riley, who actually drew the plat, so if there's any questions specific to the plat, you can ask those of him as well. The, we are aware that the five lots that are less than 10,000 square feet, and through some simple manipulation of property lines, we'll be able to get those all to meet the minimum requirements. But good questions by Ms. Ballard. Chris, can you go back to one of your previous slides? I'll try to answer those questions for you.
Which one?
This one right here. Perfect. At the time of the rezoning in 2023, we were working with not only Jim Roll, but the Patels who own that five-acre parcel, and at that time, they were trying to reorganize that plat into lots that looked like those as opposed to what the current lot alignment is, configuration is. And I think when council, when we came to council, that's why they gave us the up to 55 lots, because at that point, the parcels would have looked a little bit different. They would have obviously squared off there, and at that point, we felt that we'd be able to plat 55 lots in there. However, things deteriorated. The Patels were no longer a part of that action, therefore Jim moved forward with the existing lots as they are, and as a result of that, we could only get 51 lots in there to meet all the minimum requirements. So hopefully that answers your question. We also are aware of all of the conditions that have been placed on this, and we've been working already with staff with regard to the drainage and the traffic, as you can see by some of the preliminary studies that have been done, and we accept all those conditions as requested by staff. And that's really all I have at this point, unless you have any specific questions.
Any questions? The applicant? Any commissioners? Commissioner DeZerro?
I just wonder if you can address the traffic study in that year?
Oh, the traffic study error. I read through the traffic study as well. I did not catch that error. I have to believe that it was a typographical error, but I will check with green light and find out what that...
Okay.
What that meant or why they chose that number.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? I'm sorry, is there anyone? Do you want to say anything, sir, in the back there at all? No? Okay. All right, so this is open up to the public. Anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Please come to the podium, state your first and last name, and spell your last name for the record, please.
Good morning, my name is Chad Nelson, last name is spelled N-E-L-S-O-N. And I only had one question that Stu might have to come up and answer. On lot 24 and 25, there is a Chevron that looks like a, the rear of the building envelope, and it shows like a sewer manhole in there. So I just want to confirm that that is the, that dotted Chevron is the building envelope. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Schmelin, do you like to address that, please?
Yes, I can. That is, in fact, a sewer line in the back, and that is a sewer easement. And so, yes, that Chevron is where we would anticipate having a building envelope, if you will, on those two lots. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public like, please, state your first and last name and spell your last name for the record?
Hi, my name is Greg Clark, C-L-A-R-K-E, from Trinity Land Development. Mr. Gilbert, you said when this was approved in 94, it's approved for 402 lots?
That's correct.
Okay. My company purchased three of the tracks. We purchased a total of 184 lots. Through our subdivision and replating, we're down to 143. So I'm trying to find out, when you say these 51 get to 393, I'm trying to figure out how our 41 lots that we have the rights to, we purchased, got transferred to this applicant without our knowledge or approval.
This information came from the rezoning effort in 2022, 2023, these total number of lots here. And you're asking if certain number of lots that were in your development, why, how they were added in?
How they were transferred. Okay, so I bought three tracks, it's a total of 184 lots.
Okay.
Through replating, we're down to 143. I never gave up my rights to those other 41 lots. I could resubdivide what I have left into smaller lots. So I'm trying to find out how those 41 extra lots I have are all of a sudden added into his 51, to where you say now you're at 393, which is under the 402 limit.
Mr. Chairman, that's probably going to require some additional research, because it's not germane to this particular project. But what I think was done with the rezoning application in 2022, 2023, that set the RE zoning, is they looked at all the lots which had been permitted prior to that, which probably included the 41 lots that he's referring to, but I can't state that here in a public setting, because I don't know the answer to that. We would need to do some additional research.
Ms. Gary, how should we handle that, her, answer that?
Because we need to do further research on that specific question. I don't know that that has one thing to do with the preliminary plat, or if that's something that you want to consider. I also, I can't answer that question specifically now without looking further into it. I don't know that specific numbers were allocated to specific portions or developments, or if it's a complete number. I don't, I don't know that.
Yeah, okay.
It's all on the original plat layout. Each parcel is allocated a certain amount of lots.
So it sounds like we'd have to get, you'd have to get with the, with the planning and zoning at the city and get those questions asked by Mr. Tunaman?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the intent is not to take away anyone else's entitlements, of course. That's not the intent.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The intent's not to remove anyone else's entitlements to lots with this, but we will go back and look and make sure that that information that was provided for the rezone was reliable at the time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to address the commission on this item? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the staff for your recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Let me forward this here. All right, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of Grand Island Estates, residential states with the following conditions. Number one, detailed engineering drawings to be submitted and approved by the city public works department prior to final plat approval, including all sanitary sewer, waterline, fireline, drainage way, and roadway design plans. Number two, secondary access point from Beach Comber shown on plat at the southwest corner to be connected through easement agreement or purchase agreement with Arizona State Land Department with copy provided to city staff. Condition three, all review agency comments contained in the staff report shall be addressed by the developer. Condition number four, all conditions of city council approval of the January 2023 general development plan that accompanied the rezoning of the subject property shall be enforced as follows. A, the development shall be limited to no more than 55 lots. B, the minimum building setback for lots abutting the Grand Island Estates parcel D development, also known as Monticello Estates, shall be 20 feet. C, minimum lot area reduced from 15,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. The 51 lots shown on the plat average well over 10,000 square feet, but five lots are slightly under 10,000 square feet by 3% or less each, and will require either readjusting lot sizes on the final plat or filing minor variance applications prior to building permit issuance in each individual case. D, side setback reduced from 10 feet to 5 feet. And finally, E, rear yard setback reduced from 20 feet to 15 feet, except for lots abutting Monticello Estates. Mr. Chairman, that completes the staff's recommendations and conditions of approval that we recommend.
All right, does applicant understand the recommendations of the staff?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any questions or comments by the commissioners? Mr. Stevenson?
I guess I just want to go back and, so do we still have an outstanding question there? We have a general plan that says 402 lots. We're saying before the committee right now is 393, but we have a question on 40 lots, whether it's included in that 393 or not yet? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's what I am understanding.
This involves other parts of the, of the area included, oh, I'll let Jeff speak.
Mr. Tunaman, please.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. That is irrelevant to this item in front of you today. This is a preliminary plat. The entitlements for this property have already been received through the council action in 2023, or 2022, I believe, which allowed the 55 lots for this specific parcel. So that's irrelevant today. If this individual would like to contact the DSD department with his questions and concerns, then we can address them accordingly. But for this action item today, that's irrelevant, because the entitlements already exist.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that clarification.
And, Mr. Chairman, that also included the adoption, the acceptance by the council with the rezone of a new development plan for this property.
Can you go, I have a question. Can you go back to the staff's, not the recommendations, but the items that you're requesting? Go back to the two previous slides. When you gave your recommendation...
Oh, which one? The recommendations?
When you wrote your, when you gave your recommendation, go to, yeah, right here. On item number two, have you, a question for the applicant, I guess, have you already contacted the Arizona State Land Department to provide, to purchase that easement area?
Yes, we have. I have made direct contact with several staff members in the right-of-way section of Arizona State Land Department, and we've been discussing how best to handle that. So they're aware that that little portion exists on the far western entrance, if you want to. It's, it's just adjacent to that western corner. There's a little sliver there between the actual right-of-way, which is now the city right-of-way, and there's a little sliver of state trust land. We've already discussed that with them, and they've provided me with applications, whatever I need to fill out, and so we're well aware.
Thank you. Any other questions by commissioners to the staff? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to either approve or disapprove?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Ballard?
To approve the preliminary subdivision plat for Grand Island residential estates containing 51 residential lots and an additional open space parcel A on approximately 17.93 acres in the residential estates planned development RE/PD district with the following conditions of approval as stated in the request.
Thank you. Do I get a second? Commissioner Laird?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ballard and a second by Commissioner Laird. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we are ready to vote.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, good luck to you. All right, that was the last item on the agenda. Now I'm going to open up for a call to the public. This call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the commission about a topic not on today's agenda. We are unable to respond directly or have a two-way conversation. If you'd like to speak, please approach the podium and spell your name for the record, and keep your comments for under five minutes. Anyone from the public like to speak to the commission on any item? Please state your first and last name and spell your last name for the record.
First name is Bonnie B. O., and then a Y, and last name is Toy T. Y.
Can you bring the microphone down? Thank you, Bonnie.
Tall people. Good morning. I am coming to you as a concerned citizen of Lake Havasu City who happens to be disabled. I noticed I'm going, attending several city council meetings and listening to several people throughout the city who have issues with the way businesses have been developed and planned. A lot of them are not handicap accessible for many people, and I keep, everybody always seems to want to blame the council. It's always the council's fault because they pass those things, the things that you agreed to and pass. The city council just says, yep, planning and zoning approved it. Well, the last couple of times, a couple weeks ago, I went to the courthouse, and I had to park, the first time I went there, I had to park because the handicap parts were all the way being used, and I ended up having to park like, it felt like a half a mile away in the back. And as I was walking on the sidewalk that took me a little bit to get to, I noticed that in the front of the courthouse building, right where all the parking spots are that are, actually have wheelchair ramps available for people who are disabled or in a wheelchair or struggle with, I struggle steps up, period. Anything with a step, I struggle with. So all of these beautiful spaces right in front of the courthouse are for special permit parking only, not for handicap people. But if you're a special permitted person that works at the courthouse, or for whatever reason goes to the new courthouse, you guys, or whoever approves that, approved for them to make it so that they handicap anybody in a wheelchair that's parked in, on the front and facing the street, you have to get out of your car. There's a curb straight across from each space, so you have to walk through the parking lot to some little corner that is flattened, that allows you to roll up or walk up. I had to walk that way because of the, the step is really high. Also, I don't know if you guys are the ones who are responsible for high steps. I would just like to say, I have a little bit of complaint about high steps, because I have difficulty with those. I realized, looking at certain businesses around town, you know, it might be smarter to have all businesses have flat accesses and then put those big poles in front of the stores, so if somebody wants to be a dumbass and run into the store, they're going to hit a pole first and not a curb. And then people who do struggle to walk will just still be able to get in easier. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to address the commission on this time? Anyone? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to Mr. Gilbert. Any upcoming meetings to review?
Yes, I have an update on that. There's no meeting on the 21st. The, we have a lot of cases that we're working on, and it just so happened between noticing and review, review timeframes, none of them were ripe for review on the 21st, so they're all getting pushed to the 6th of March, and that'll be a very busy day, a lot of stuff on that agenda. But the 21st can be off for the commission, so enjoy.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of things that I wanted to mention earlier, I apologize not bringing up. Next week, the city council is going to be looking at the corrugated metal discussion to give staff direction on what to bring back to you in the future on that. And then they're also looking at a number of text amendments to the subdivision ordinance that will be reviewed as well, and then there's some other stuff, of course, individual projects, but they have a very busy development services agenda next week, if anyone's interested in being there. Couple of things that I wanted to mention earlier, I apologize not bringing up. Next week, the city council is going to be looking at the corrugated metal discussion to give staff direction on what to bring back to you in the future on that. And then they're also looking at a number of text amendments to the subdivision ordinance that'll be reviewed as well. And then there's some other stuff, of course, individual projects. But they have a very busy development services agenda next week, if anyone's interested in being there or watching. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's, we have no further business. The meeting is adjourned.